Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for February the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, being called to order at three oh four. To help slow the transmission of COVID- nineteen and protect the health and safety of the community, city council, as well as board and commission meetings, will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel six, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel ninety-nine. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myclendale, and on AppTV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screenweed and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call eight one eight nine three seven eight one zero zero. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Thank you. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Any report, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two special public meeting of the city council was posted on February first, two thousand and twenty-two, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to inform everyone that the first item will be pulled for today and will return on March the first. So what is the next item, please?
Item number two would be Community Development Regarding Update of the Draft Economic Development Plan. A. Note and file the report on the draft economic development plan and provide feedback on the priorities and initiatives.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We are pleased to bring to you today, present to you, a three-year economic development plan that our economic development team has been working on. And this will help the city's economic recovery as we are slowly emerging from the pandemic. The plan will be presented to council in three phases. The first phase will provide some background on the city and the initiatives and the feedback that the team, the economic development team, has received from the COVID Recovery Task Force. And after the presentation, we will ask council's input on initiatives and focus areas that you'd like this plan to focus on and move towards. With that, I'll invite Bradley Calvert, Assistant Director of Community Development, for introduction. And we are also excited to have our new Deputy Director of Economic Development partaking in this presentation that Bradley will introduce.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of the city council. As mentioned, we are here to provide an update on what is kind of the initial stages of our economic development plan. If you give me one second here, I'll share the PowerPoint. So the goals of today's meeting are, we would like to provide a kind of a background and an overview of the existing demographics and economics of the city. What we'd like to obtain from council during this meeting is to really get some ideas on what you may want to see considered as part of this economic development plan. Any feedback on maybe locations or programs to look at, if there are special initiatives you'd like us to consider, things that we would take back to our working group, which we'll describe in just a moment. But the goals here are really to use this plan to broaden what was really four kind of economic development goals that had existed into something that's more elaborate, more detailed, more focused on identifying and assessing the city's strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities, and which will give us a comprehensive strategy to move forward with. We would like to be able to gain, and part of the plan here is to obtain the support and input from our business community. As we'll highlight in a moment, we have assembled our COVID Recovery Task Force to help guide us in this process. And really, what this is going to do is lay a foundation for the city of Glendale, really to create and strengthen a growing economy, a sustainable economy, equitable economy, and one that's inclusive. So what you have as part of the attachment to the council report is what we would consider to be the background information. This is kind of the core and key information that defines the city today from an economic and demographic perspective. What we've also tried to do is identify opportunities to assess where we are successful or where we could maybe improve compared to some other peer cities. This is both are really on a local, regional, and state and national scale. We are trying to look far and wide to see what have other cities done in terms of kind of growing an economy, one that we may believe that we'd like to see grow here in, say, tech sectors? What are ways that places have kind of adapted and changed and modified as they've emerged from the COVID pandemic? And then really identify areas of focus and conversation for our working group. And again, what we've done is we've assembled our COVID Recovery Task Force, and we thought that this would be a good cross-section of the business community as it represents small businesses, large businesses, various different economic sectors, that they can help us zero in on things that would allow us to implement and create plans and strategies that are measurable, things that can allow us to assess whether or not they've been successful, and then also if they can be nimble and flexible. While this is intended to be a three-year plan, it's not going to be exactly set in stone. Part of the plan will identify measurable objectives that allow us to adapt, where we identify things that may be not working and we can improve, or maybe things that are working very well that we continue to expand on and grow. So what we've done in terms of these case studies and peer studies, we've looked across the region, across the state, across the country. You'll see a number of cities in there locally. We have Burbank, Pasadena, Santa Clarita, all kind of local peer cities. We also do compare against Los Angeles and the county in general. We've also looked into the San Diego area and Chula Vista and Northern California with Fremont and Santa Rosa. We also wanted to look beyond California, though, understand what other cities of comparable size, comparable economies, comparable structures that we could learn from. And what we've chosen Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and we've also chosen Worcester, Massachusetts. There are other cities that we haven't looked at from a comparable perspective, but maybe from a program perspective that you'll see emerge as themes throughout this plan and each time we return to council. This includes, has included cities from Washington State, Colorado, Georgia, and the DMV area, DC, Maryland, Virginia, which we feel have comparable demographics and economic goals that we have as well and things that we could learn from. The reason why we chose the cities we did from beyond California, Worcester, Massachusetts, is one that we really saw as a leading small-friendly, or small-business-friendly community. They have a very thriving startup culture as part of the Route Nine Tech Corridor in Massachusetts. They've done a great job of establishing strong partnerships with local and regional educational institutions to really advance that entrepreneur mindset and attitude. So we really saw this as a city that was very comparable to Glendale in that approach and that goal of really trying to grow and home-grow local businesses, particularly from a tech sector. We also chose Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for their thriving biotech economy. We have used tech in a very broad sense ever since the city has established those goals of growing a tech cluster. But as this has emerged, it's important for us to identify what niche markets may exist. Winston-Salem was a good case study of that, part of the Resource Triangle Park in North Carolina with Raleigh-Durham and a few other cities in the area. Winston-Salem was able to kind of carve out their own individual niche market from this. It was really in a biotech economy. And while that may not be necessarily the sector we pursue, it is one that we do see as an opportunity. We have three major hospitals here. Glendale Community College now has a biotech certificate, so this very well could be one of those approaches. But as Ms. Vang will highlight here in a few moments, there are other opportunities that exist as well. What Winston-Salem was also very successful in doing was really lowering the city's median age by attracting qualified young talent, something that is very, very necessary for a thriving technology sector. Through this, they were also able to significantly increase their consumer spending, which dramatically changed the economic profile of the city. So that's why you see those two cities as really kind of comparable cities that we identified from across the country. Now, the way we've used that information is to look at things like employment, total number of employees, or a total number of people employed within the city, the kind of sectors that they're employed in. But one of the things that we had to do is really try to balance out those scales of housing costs and what we would actually call location affordability. So the rule of thumb typically is that housing should not take up more than thirty to thirty-three percent of income. Transportation should not exceed twenty to twenty-five percent. And really, this is a much, a fairer way of assessing a cost of living of a region rather than just on housing. We recognize that housing affordability is a challenge in this region, but by trying to understand both housing and transportation costs combined, we can do a fair assessment and comparison to other cities around the region, around the state, and around the country. So one of the things that you'll see in the background information that you received is how we kind of did this comparison using this information. And you can see that it starts to level the playing field a little bit when we compare to other cities. Winston-Salem is a good example. There are some outliers, Santa Clarita, as well as Worcester, Massachusetts, both being on the higher and lower end. But this is what gave us information to be able to kind of more accurately compare the cost of living. And as you can see from this chart, we fall in line, while cost of living is high in California, and we're aware of that. We do fall in line with many of our other cities such as Burbank, as you can see there, Los Angeles and the county, and are outperforming other communities such as Pasadena and Santa Clarita. So when we look at these comparisons, one of the, some of the background information that we included was office vacancy, retail vacancy, industrial vacancy, kind of the primary land uses within the city. And Glendale does, is higher in the office vacancy market in the region. You can see in this chart, we compare against Burbank, Pasadena, and LA County overall. There should be kind of an asterisk next to this, if you will. The Class A office space within the city, the vacancy rate is going to be higher on that. We have been informed in many discussions with property owners, building managers, and really that is because of the COVID- nineteen pandemic, people moving to at-home work, recognizing that's probably going to be something that's going to stay for a while. So while this number does seem relatively low, we do see it being much higher or higher in the Class A market. And when it comes to retail vacancy, we have actually performed very, very well. You can see we are just, we're actually outperforming all of our peer cities in the region. We've done very well in terms of maintaining that retail space being occupied, as we'll cover in a moment from our COVID surveys that were done during the pandemic. The overall business community, particularly the retail community, was very pleased with some of the responses ranging from alfresco to some of the grants that were available. And we do believe that that really helped keep our vacancy rate lower than the other cities in the region. And then the industrial vacancy, this is very low for us. This is low primarily because we don't have a lot of industrial space in the city in the first place. There's a very high demand, but you can see that the vacancy rate for industrial space in the city is very low compared to our peers as well. Now, part of this plan, and what's also an essential component of this, is how the city is going to emerge from the COVID- nineteen pandemic. What are some of the changing climates, some of the changing attitudes? What are the things that we can do to help support that? The city and city council have taken a number of initiatives already, ranging from financial support with small business grants, business resources, arts grants, but also changes in the way people and businesses have conducted their business. Alfresco is a very good example of that, something that allowed restaurants and businesses to continue to operate during the pandemic when there were restrictions in place. That is something that's evolving into a permanent program, a long-term program for the city in two distinct neighborhoods. And those are the kind of elements that we are hoping to identify from this plan and during the discussions with our working group, are what are those things that have been done as part of the pandemic, or things that we've learned from the pandemic that we can carry forward that that will help make businesses successful in Glendale, but also make us a destination, a place where people want to do business? During the pandemic, we had conducted a number of different surveys. And one of the most recent surveys was really to identify where the business community's sentiment was in terms of response to both the pandemic and going forward. What are some things that the city could do or consider? What are their biggest concerns? What are they optimistic about? We had a total of five hundred and sixty-one responses to this business survey. You can see that retail led the way, professional services coming in second. But we did, we were successful in getting feedback from a diverse cross-section of businesses. You can also see that it was very heavily focused towards, or the responses were very heavily geared towards smaller businesses, with over sixty-eight percent being fifty employees or less, and thirty-five percent one to ten employees. So we were confident that we were able to get feedback from the small business community as part of this. We know that that's an integral part of the city's economy. That is why we chose a location such as Worcester as one of the comp cities for us to compare to.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Excuse me. Can you explain again what you are showing on the survey? What on the left side? What it's showing?
The left side is the percentage of responses from these various business sectors to the survey that we had put out. On the right side is the breakout of the number of employees that businesses have.
So on the left side, fourteen percent of retail and wholesale businesses, they answered?
Of fourteen percent of the five hundred and sixty-one responses were from retail and wholesale.
So like education, what consists of in education? Whom you ask this question? Education, education?
This would be a self-answer on the survey. Those responding would select the economic sector that they are in, the industry that they work for. That's also one reason why you won't see this total up to a hundred percent. There are other industries that were, that are not identified as kind of these top-ranking ones in terms of rate of response.
And the real estate, you are asking the owner of a real estate company?
It could be an owner of a real estate company. It could be a building manager, could be a representative of a building.
I see. We are not asking real estate brokers, are we?
They could have been ones that responded, yes. They could have been part of that five percent.
Okay. Thank you.
So what we saw from the key findings is that nearly fifty percent of businesses expect to have more employees working remotely than in the past. This is obviously going to have the larger impact on our office market, not as much in the service, retail, hospitality economy. But it does point to more people working from home and the consideration of how can Glendale still provide an attractive location for people to work here, even if that is a reduced footprint for offices? There were also other concerns that were expressed by the business community, such as their cash flow and access to capital, consistency in the COVID regulations and rules. Not everything that they identified as kind of a challenge going forward was necessarily something related specifically to Glendale, but it could be broader policies on a state or local level. And the COVID regulations are a good example of that. They also expressed concern or strong desire to be able to reconnect with their customers. Most of them were doing business in different ways, to-go orders for restaurants and retail, working remotely, trying to find opportunities to reconnect with their customers. And one of the leading considerations was also childcare and labor market concerns. We see that today. It's a very strong, very competitive labor market right now. But childcare has emerged as a challenge and a key concern for many businesses. When asked how the city could help, marketing, social media support really rose to the top as one of those key abilities for us to be able to help address, whether that's reopening, new models of business. And as Ms. Vang will acknowledge here in a moment, there are a few considerations for that, or for programs for us to be able to move forward. They express interest in grant programs and rental assistance as trying to bring their businesses back into the fold. And even, and also very important, and while this is dependent on state and local regulations, just ensuring that the businesses can stay open. There was a lot of neck-snapping for a period of time of how many people could be inside, how long they could be inside, if there was a mask, if there were vaccine requirements, and making sure that there's consistency, especially with the information being dispensed, was important to them.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, Bradley, on the previous slide, can you just elaborate on what is meant by grant programs? What kind of grant programs?
We didn't get into specifics with them on what kind of grant programs. This really kind of ties back to that access to capital and cash flow. Some businesses trying to reopen following the pandemic, there are certain costs that come along with that after being shuttered for a period of time, and also remaining stable. So we haven't, this survey didn't dig down to the exact kind of grant programs. That would be something that we would seek feedback from council if that's something you would like to see us investigate more with our working group, and we would take that discussion up with them.
If I can enter, is that it, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. Bradley, Mr. Calvert, didn't we have grant programs where we, if a new restaurant was coming in, we would give them a grant for a refrigerator system? I know Casa Cordova asked for a grant for their, I think, believe it was for their outdoor facility. So would that be the kind of grants we're talking about?
It could be, or it could be any other type of grant related to various different industries. And again, that's something we would seek, some guidance and direction from the city council, and if that's something you would like us to explore further. In the manner in which we would explore that would be to identify those kind of opportunities, maybe what other cities have done, talk to the business community and see what would be most helpful to them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead.
But overall, what we heard was a very optimistic response to the survey. As you can see, a majority, more than a majority, were either very optimistic or optimistic going forward. For two thousand and twenty-two, at that time, I believe many of us thought most of these waves of the pandemic would be over. But there was a lot of optimism that we heard. There was about twenty-one percent that were either pessimistic or very pessimistic. And most of those concerns go back to those key findings such as access to capital, reconnecting, reconnecting to customers, things of that nature, also understanding that the footprint of some businesses may be smaller. One more point I'll make that we, what you'll see in that report, and I think something that we've learned, both from our very first meeting with the COVID Recovery Task Force and just during the pandemic, is that place is going to matter. What kind of amenities a city can provide, whether that's open space, a safe, walkable urban environment, housing options, things of that nature, that is going to be very important. As evidenced by us conducting these meetings virtually, many people can do their business in many different locations now. And place is going to be a key component to that. What is going to make us the most attractive alternative, most attractive option? And some of that will come down to what kind of place we are creating. So you'll see that that highlights some of the significant and important projects that we have going forward. As Ms. Vang will cover in a moment, that was also a comment we heard from our initial COVID Recovery Task Force meeting, ensuring that things like housing and walkability and public open space were still kind of key components. So what I would like to do from here is, one, introduce our new Deputy Director of Community Development, Economic Development, of Economic Development, Shu Wang. She comes to us from San Bernardino County. And what she's going to do is give you an overview of our very first meeting with the COVID Recovery Task Force and some of the topics that we'll take up going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine and city council members. It is an honor to join the city of Glendale, and I look forward to working with all of you to grow and strengthen the city of Glendale's economy. And now it's my pleasure to provide an update on efforts with the COVID Recovery Task Force. As Mr. Calvert mentioned, economic development collaborated with this working group. To have meaningful conversations that will help pave the way towards developing a strategic, measurable, and sustainable three-year economic development plan. The kickoff meeting was held last month where economic and demographic data presented earlier helped really set the stage that led to a number of opportunities and goals identified, which I will go over shortly in the presentation. We expect to have three, excuse me, additional meetings over the next few months with the intent to formulate effective and relevant strategies, develop an implementation plan, and establish benchmarks and measurable goals.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Councilwoman Brotman?
Ms. Vang, first of all, welcome to Glendale officially. The COVID Recovery Task Force, can you just remind us who is on that? I was looking for a list in the materials and didn't see it.
Absolutely. It's actually... Absolutely, it's actually a variety, I have a whole list here, but, community and local business leaders, all with unique backgrounds that have a vested interest in our city. We're happy to provide you with a detailed list and breakdown of all the names.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay, I, and yeah, if it's too long of a list to read it off, and it sounds like it is, yeah, if you could provide it to us, that'd be great, thanks.
Absolutely, no problem. So again, there were a number of opportunities and key findings that emerged from this initial meeting with the task force group. The first is that Glendale needs a strong brand identity, and a robust marketing strategy that will elevate our profile, set us apart, and give us brand recognition. Another opportunity discussed is that we need more entertainment options that will appeal to talent, and will enable us to attract young professionals to the tech industry. As Mr. Calvert mentioned earlier, the group emphasized that place-making is very important. So reimagining public places and creating more vibrant urban centers, pedestrian-friendly, walkable areas, would also help with our pursuit of talent attraction and retention. Also streamlining the permitting and entitlement process that will allow businesses to easily set up shop, and reducing overall costs of housing were also key findings from the discussion. And given our close proximity to educational institutions such as USC, UCLA, Caltech, JPL, just to name a few. There is incredible talent that we can tap into, and an opportunity to strengthen partnerships with universities so that we can attract and retain talent.
Excuse me?
Yes, Councilmember O'Janey.
Can you go back to the, yeah. How you can reduce the overall cost of housing? How you would do that?
That would, that's an issue that, you know, obviously not Glendale is experiencing, it's statewide in California. And so this is where we would work closely with legislation, obviously, city council, in terms of, you know, direction and, and guidance, and we would have to work collectively to figure out, you know, some opportunities where we can help reduce costs of housing overall. But it's not, you know, unique to Glendale, it's statewide, as we know.
And Brad, your, your question, excuse me, your question raises a, a very important distinction. These are some opportunities that we would like to explore further. So we may not have answers to all of them right now. We assume that there's something that the council would be interested, and it's important. You know, you hear it all the time, but from an economic development standpoint, it's important that we have all ranges of housing. But specifically affordable to different income levels for the workforce that we're trying to attract here. So we'll be looking at all of those things together.
I'm wholeheartedly in favor of reducing the overall cost of housing, but, I don't know if that's feasible, that's what bothers me, but I hope you'll find a way, but, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So given our innovative tech environment, it was also brought up that there is tremendous opportunity to create niche markets, such as biotech, gaming, or even perhaps cybersecurity, as these could be natural economic clusters to help build upon and to enhance the ecosystem here. As a best practice, we are looking at the LA Clean Tech Incubator to help grow the entrepreneurial and innovation ecosystem in Glendale and to advance our tech efforts to the next level. The LA Clean Tech Incubator actually launched about a decade ago, and was a multi-institutional collaboration between public, private, and education leaders to help entrepreneurs specifically in the clean tech space bring their ideas forward and get their ideas funded. It was spun out of government and now funded primarily by federal and state grants, corporate and philanthropic dollars, and operating successfully by nonprofit organizations. So we believe that this could be a model that can be replicated here.
And Mayor and council members, this is an opportunity for us to identify, knowing that we have Hero House and, and our Kids X accelerator here in, in Glendale. How do we advance those and kind of take those to the next level? And that's really some of the information that we'll be able to glean from other examples such as the Clean Tech Incubator.
So another focus area brought up during our group discussion is the need to enhance the city's entertainment industry so that we can achieve recognition as a destination city. Not only that, entertainment and amenities are very important and vital to the growth of the tech sector, and also to the attraction of talent. An idea we have is to leverage the LA brand and promote to domestic and international travelers. Are visiting the LA metro area already. We would like to develop day passes such as Benadie and Glendale Marketing Campaign to showcase all the wonderful things to do here, places to visit, eat in the city, to get people engaged and also excited to come to our city. Another goal that we have is to identify funding sources to help with marketing and programming in order to amplify awareness of our city and to promote Glendale as a destination city. So in regards to brand identity, a potential idea we have is possibly market Glendale as a city of firsts. So we are home to many firsts to start a business, and we continue to serve as a testing ground for a number of firsts of its kind, whether it's retail or restaurant concepts such as Panda Express, Apple. And I'm sure you've heard the latest Amazon-style store that was just announced recently, just to name a few examples. They all chose Glendale as its very first or one of the very first locations. So this is definitely a testament to our strong fundamentals here, our marketplace. So it's very important for us to have a strong marketing presence in order for us to tell our story and to promote our value proposition as we work towards achieving our brand identity.
Madam Mayor, council members, just to, just to add on to that, this is not a new development for Glendale. We've actually been city of firsts or first to market for several decades. The Disney Store tested the market here in Glendale. Shua had mentioned the Apple Store, Apple One is here in Glendale. And then right up through now in our incubators, our accelerators. Kids X is the first pediatric accelerator in the world. So Glendale really has a history of being first in many of these different areas.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brodmann, go ahead.
Yeah, back to that, that last slide, so Apple had its, didn't have its first store here, what, what?
It did.
Yes. In the Galleria.
Was its first Apple Store? Wow, I didn't know that, okay.
They opened its, I think it's called Stone Point in Virginia, because they were three hours ahead of us. But Glendale is store one.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Vang.
Okay, thank you. So some key next, next steps with the working group are to solidify recommendations that could address, you know, the areas of opportunities and goals that I just presented on. We will also focus on programs that are within our abilities, and certainly consider best practices as well as successful programs from other cities that, again, could potentially be duplicated here. So our next meeting with the task force group is coming up later this week on February tenth. And we do intend on formulating concrete strategies with subsequent meetings to develop, again, an implementation plan and to establish benchmarks and measurable goals.
And Mayor and council members, what we would like to do is, is we move forward with these meetings is, is conduct check-ins with the city council to see, are the ideas that are, that are being developed within these meetings something that are achievable to the city council? Something that the city council would support? And, and advancing those ideas i- in ways that the city council could see those being, being successful. So as, as mentioned, what we would like to do is gather some, some feedback from city council here today. Are there some ideas, initiatives, goals that you would like us to consider? And, and understand that this is a, a working document that we'll bring back to council several times prior to adoption.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Janey?
Yes. If you can go to page five of the report which has been presented, not this brief, the page five of, on our package. Can you go to the page five or twenty-three of eighty-nine? And briefly, but the survey that found that the top initiative, survey responders would be the city to prioritize included. Is there any way you can elaborate on that, how you did it, and which we, what we see here? What, what's the result?
So the, by order of rank, the, the survey identified things such as child ser- childcare support, grant programs, worker training programs, ease of permit access, additional landlord, landlord and building owner support, and then marketing initiatives. What we would say is that not everything in that list is going to be something that we'll, may be able to develop a solution for. There may be opportunities for us to develop some plans or strategies to try to tackle them. But these were the things that were identified in those surveys, some of the biggest hurdles. What we see is, is some opportunities for us to really advance as part of the plan would be things like training programs, ease of permit access, marketing, things of those nature.
Is this same survey which you were referring said five hundred and sixty-one people participated? Or this is different survey than that?
That is correct, that it is that survey that we referenced in the slides.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, Ms. Vang, welcome to Glendale. Second of all, thank you, Mr. Calvert and Ms. Vang for this, this report, very comprehensive. I'm gonna take comments, questions from my colleagues, would anyone like to begin?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kusakian, go ahead.
Can I ask staff what, may I ask staff what the source was for a lot of the statistical information? In terms of household income, in terms of the age, a lot of the detail that went into the report? What are we using as a source of this data? And, and how old is that data?
Some of those sources vary, some from the census, some from our, our finance team. And, and some from what we would consider the ACS, the American Community Survey, is, is some of that data is provided through there. As we move the plan forward, there's data in there that we're going to need to reconcile to ensure consistency in, in which sources that we ultimately settle on.
So was this the most recent census data, or was this the census data from ten years ago?
I believe that was, I, I don't have that right in front of me right now, but I believe it was from the American Community Survey estimates at the time. When that data was first put together, I, I do not believe the census data had been released yet.
Okay, the reason I, I, I bring this up is because when we had a report come back to us regarding the census, the most recent census data and the numbers that were available, and I know that the census is only part of the picture, that was a very scant report. And here we are provided with a report that has far more important details, I think, that can guide us in our policymaking. And, you know, it seems exciting, if I can only be certain that this is accurate, you know, up-to-date information versus us making decisions or prognosis speculation on the directions we want to go in to find out that this data is maybe not the most recent. So I would like to know what the source of the information is. The other is, there was a section, I think somewhere in the report, that was referring to the college-educated population. I'd like to know what, where, what the source of that information was, how are we defining college-educated? I think that somewhere maybe it said there was some reference to four-year degrees. And the reason I bring that up is because there was some mention somewhere in the report, and staff can point me to the page or let us all know what the page was, saying that Glendale's percentage of college education, our population, is lower than our neighboring cities. Is that correct?
Page three.
That is correct, for a four-year degree, it is longer than the peer cities.
So I, I can appreciate that staff probably has looked at some statistics, and based on those statistics, put this out there. And perhaps this information, within a certain understanding, may have some value. But what it doesn't take into consideration is that we have, according to the same report, a population that is mostly foreign-born. Over fifty-three percent of the population in Glendale was born somewhere other than the United States. Which, by the way, I think is a fantastic statistic. I think it's great to see the diversity for those who think that Glendale is the Glendale that it was during the nineteen thirties or forties or during the sundown era. I would point to them, to that statistic, that more than half of our population was born somewhere other than in the United States, number one. Number two is, for a lot of folks who come from other countries, who come here with college degrees, oftentimes those college degrees are not accepted within the bureaucratic transferring determination of what a degree perhaps issued during the Cold War era in the Soviet Union from a university is what the equivalent of it may be here. That doesn't mean that our population is uneducated or undereducated, quite contrary. You'll meet a lot of people with college educations within our community that just perhaps don't have a United States-issued bachelor's or master's. So I do think that there needs to be some work done in trying to sparse this out, given the unique nature and makeup of our, of our community. And I, I want to know if staff has taken that into consideration.
What I would say is the report is not advocating that the residents of the city are not educated. Rather, I think it's to identify opportunities, as, as you mentioned, there may be some reconciliation in terms of those that obtained a degree overseas and understanding how that translates here, but also understanding how we can partner with universities to be able, if, if there is a need to increase that, that overall percentage. But that's something to be identified as part of this work, that's, that's what we would be doing going forward. And, and understanding how, if there is a need to improve that, that we would do so.
Well, I would like, I would like staff to definitely, definitely take that into consideration and do that. Because, you know, I don't want us to assume that we may not have, you know, depending on, on what type of a city that we want to create, what type of laws, what type of amenities we want to bring into the city. I, I would want, I would not want someone to say, well, you know, Pasadena or Burbank have a, have a more educated or a population that has more college education than Glendale does, I don't know if that's necessarily accurate. In terms of the brand, the brand identity, Madam Mayor, I, I do want to state that, I, I certainly, I don't know if any of you had these flashbacks of the failed branding efforts of previous councils, of the failed squiggly lines and the Glendale animated effort. I don't know how much effort I would like to see put into a branding effort, whether it's calling Glendale a city of firsts or anything else. My core belief is that, you know, the most popular brands or the most well-known and well-respected brands are so, they are such because of the product that they offer, the fundamentals are strong, people gravitate towards them, and the brand itself, you know, doesn't, you know, most popular brands don't have to have a branding necessarily strategy. The branding is the quality of the product that they offer. One of the things that I think that we have, we need to absolutely focus on is creating a process by which businesses feel welcome to Glendale. They feel that they can get their permits done quickly and simply. And that will be the greatest asset that Glendale will have moving forward, growing our economy. I've, I haven't brought this up during any open session because, you know, we've tried to address it piecemeal and, and raising it with community development. But, you know, I have had a number of people complain about the, and I understand COVID and everyone is overworked. But, you know, if we want to make sure that we build a reputation as a place, that this is a place where you want to have your business established, then we need to do something about cutting down the wait time for seeing staff in permitting and planning, to getting permits processed, to getting a response. We had a presentation done at the League of California Cities, Madam Mayor and colleagues, about what, how we revised our police recruitment process to use a Domino's Pizza-type tracker. It was a very interesting presentation, a lot of cities were excited to hear about what Glendale is doing when you apply to the police. to the police department, you can know at what stage you are in in the process moving along. Uh, we need to implement something similar, if not identical to that, for any type of permit that anyone submits in the city. And I think if we make it a goal for ourselves, that we are gonna be the city that helps facilitate you through and and guide you through that permitting process, not with a concierge, but for everyone, that that is our customer service goal. We don't need to call ourselves a city of firsts or anything else, people will want to come here and do business based on that track record. So, um, that, those are some of my thoughts. I do think we need to concentrate on strong fundamentals and do the things that we do well versus necessarily trying to reinvent certain things, making Glendale, I don't know how a day-passing Glendale would work or what it would entail, it's certainly an interesting idea, I won't stop staff from exploring it further, but I think that more importantly, I would look within us, towards us, if we're talking about, for instance, family care, we should look to our own organization and see if we give parental leave across the board to everyone and not make it part of sick leave. Those are the types of things that I would be interested in looking at. And the last thing I would say is that there was a while back, a meeting that was conducted at the Age of Learning hosted, I think by the city, I think it may have been Economic Development. And it brought forth, brought together people from different tech sectors and different groups to have a similar survey as to the one that's been proposed here, and there were some recommendations and findings uh, that came out of that. Was any of that incorporated, or has anyone looked into that to see what the suggestions were from that?
We have not put every survey in here yet, uh, there's still more information to gather and include in this. What we've tried to highlight here is most recently in terms of the COVID recovery. The task force, uh, what was identified by those businesses in that survey, and to put that forward here as we develop a plan going forward. Uh, but it's not the end-all-be-all survey that will be included.
Well, I mean, we've done some of that work, right? I I remember I attended that information gathering, it was a luncheon. And there were a number of points that were brought up then as well, some of it was related to ease or access to public transportation, et cetera. I would urge staff to go back and see if they can find notes from that meeting. Um, it wasn't that long ago. Some of the information may still be of value versus trying to to repeat and do some of the same exercises. I do think that we need to periodically uh, check in and regularly check in with our businesses. But in terms of what we can do, I think that there's and I I would like to challenge staff to see how we can find ways to help uh, navigate the bureaucracy during this COVID recovery period. I've had a number of small businesses in Glendale approach me and ask me to help them with the SBA process. That's not what I do professionally, it is very confusing bureaucratic maze. Right now, it seems to be that even the SBA is overwhelmed. A lot of our smaller businesses are struggling because some of them are getting rejected on technicalities. And, you know, just as I was asking last week about the city striving to be a tier-one partner with ERAP, I would like us to see us work more closely with the Small Business Administration and see what we can do to help our businesses, that when they hit a wall, um, they don't necessarily have to come to the city council members individually to help them. We can point them to staff and say, you know, we have two or three individuals who are pros at this, they will help guide you through this, and they will be advocates for the businesses that we have in Glendale. So that is something that I think is absolutely critical, and I'd like to see done. Thank you.
Is that it, Councilmember Kusakian? Yes? Okay, all right, next would be Councilmember Brotman, go ahead.
Yeah, um, first I wanna say that a lot of the things Councilmember Kusakian said came right, you know, were just took the words right out of my mouth, I I completely one hundred percent agree with this idea about branding. Branding should follow, not lead. Branding should respond to a greatness that we develop first and not kind of spin a story that doesn't feel believable, so. I am very skeptical about these big brand campaigns like he is, and and I can't say it as well as he did, so. Just put two marks next to that comment. I also agree that streamlining the permitting and entitlement process, and in general, just customer service from the city to the public, to businesses and individuals, is absolutely critical. And I hear it all the time as well, and I'm sure we all do, we hear all the time frustration. You know, comments that that people don't wanna do business here, people don't want to build here, um, and all those kinds of things, so I think and and I do know this is not something new, that staff is aware of this, and the city manager himself is on numerous occasions talked about how he recognizes that we we do need to step back and look at, you know, look at our codes, look at our processes, look at our systems, and kind of rethink the way we do things here, and I think that, I agree with Councilmember Kusakian, that'll go a really long way. I I I really liked what I heard about the placemaking term and and entertainment options. I I do think if if we wanna attract young people and and businesses need to attract, you know, young, educated people in order to be successful. We we need to really work on walkability and arts and culture. Uh, and on that point, on on arts and culture, I really sometimes I don't get the sense that our arts and culture folks and our business development folks are completely aligned. I think that arts and culture can't be business to business, economic development driven, it it really needs to be a collaboration. So I would, I would ask to kind of look at how those interactions are occurring and make sure that arts and culture, our arts and culture department and our commission and all the people involved in arts and culture are fully at the center of things we do um, in the economic development arena, and and specifically, like, take art, the Artsoc project as an example of that. I also really think that as we, you know, we we think about placemaking, one of the things that, you know, I think young people really want is homegrown, local, one-off types of establishments as opposed to, you know, the chain kind of image, the chain feel, and, you know, we have we have these big chains in the Americana and in the Galleria, and that's fine, that that, there's a, there's, obviously, those are popular, people come here for that. We don't wanna get rid of that, but I think, um, I I think we we need to think about how we can develop more of what we are starting to see pop up, Paperback Brewery. I think there's a little place, the San Fernando, um, these kind of smaller little bit more kind of, I don't know what you would call them, a little bit more urban, uh, organic, edgy, uh, I don't know what the right term is, but that kind of stuff that that we should we should find ways to make to make that happen, you know, I know that's not top-down, that has to be organic, but but how do we do that? And things like, like, you know, casual live music venues, we used to have a a great jazz club, um, probably before my time here, um, and lost it, and I think those are the kinds of things that we're missing. Um, comedy clubs, just more of that kind of entertainment that's gonna appeal to um, a demographic that we wanna attract. Let's see, I'm just kind of, these are just random, random thoughts going down my list. We talk about partnerships with universities. And and that's fine, but we, you know, we have a a great community college here, and um, it was mentioned in the report, but I think it it should be given more prominence. Um, how do we collaborate with Glendale College on on apprenticeship programs? For instance, we're gonna have a lot of building retrofits as we take gas out of buildings and put in electric, and it's gonna be a huge uh, economic opportunity for for people. How do we develop, how do we work with the college and with uh, the unions, for instance, the Carpenter's Union and others, to to really um, have these very robust kind of, uh, not internship, uh, apprenticeship, you know, programs here. And just looking down my list. Um, as far as, um, oh, just going back to the placemaking idea, you know, we have these great, you know, Montrose, Honolulu, we have that that area, and we have Kenneth Village, and and these are like, these are really wonderful areas that I know I go to all the time. As, you know, as an alternative to that downtown feel, and I think there are a couple other places that we should really put on our radar to think about creating that village environment. We were, I think many of us were at an art opening in the Adam Square Mini Park the other day, and I know Mayor Devine mentioned a creative crosswalk that will go in, I think their plan for it to go in between the the caffeine coffee shop and the park. And as you stand in the park and you look at that strip where the coffee shop is, you can just envision another Kenneth Village. Smaller scale perhaps, well, maybe not that much smaller. Another, another Honolulu, I think that is an area, and if we if we look at a few others, I I also think the area adjacent to Glendale College. Right now, it's a real dead zone, there's a lot of just empty parking lots, but it's a college. And, you know, is there a way to create a little college town around there? Or Victory Boulevard, a lot of, you know, there's been um, consideration in the community for kind of an equestrian-themed type of um, community, so I think if we can look at some of these other villages that we can develop throughout the city, it would give it just that much more of a of 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 a pull for people to come here because it's it's got, it's got this, these real character locations. I think I will, I may come back if I have another thing or two, but I think that covers most of my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Um, Councilmember Najarian or Agajanian?
Go ahead, Resh. Do you go ahead? You are doing better job than me usually.
Don't say that, please, Resh, please. We wait for your pearls of wisdom all the time. Okay, so I just have a few things to say, I don't wanna really get too deep into this, because I know this is just the beginning. So, you know, the the bit about branding, you know, I'm not saying we should launch a new Coke and have it fail like that. But, you know, we're kind of down that road already with our whole Tech Week, and and what do we call it, Tech?
Tech Week.
Tech, uh.
Tech on Tap.
Tech Initiative. The Tech Initiative, there's Tech on Tap, there's Tech Week.
Okay, so if that's not branding, I don't know what is, so we're we're on our way towards branding, I don't think we should pull the plug on that, I mean, that's it it's not like those little squiggly lines that we paid, I don't know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that we don't use anymore, but, you know, we do have some organic branding, I think that's organic branding, because we are we are promoting the tech, so we we can't back away from that. I think we need more fine dining in Glendale. We have been looking for years for more of the white tablecloth type of dining, and there's only a few around. We've got a lot of that mid-level you know, like the 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 Damons and you know, Karas and, you know, a few others, I don't wanna go through names. Very few of those nice restaurants where if a a couple wants to go out and have a good time, you're not forced to go to Parkway Grill in Pasadena, or uh, the Chop House, or to Morton's, or whatever. So we've, obviously, we've got bourbon steak, which is, which is nice, but very few others that fit that bill. I know we've looked for them, we've tried, we've given incentives before for other restaurants and restaurateurs, I think there was someone from West Hollywood or somewhere, I forget the name, Phil, they were gonna go in to the Lex, Next on Lex, or something like that. That fell through, but I think we need to keep, keep looking for that. I do think we need a, and I think that's something that Glendale's becoming known for, is good food. Uh, in some of those, uh, Mayor Devine, I think you pointed out in L.A. Times, things to do if you're here for the Super Bowl, come to Glendale and eat at Raffi's. And the mini kebab restaurant was one of the top hundred restaurants in the country, or something like that. You know, we, so we have good restaurants and a very diversity of cuisine, I think we need to continue with that, and that will that will build on itself. That's one of the things people say, oh, you live in Gl- Glendale, oh, I love, I love the food there. So that's something that I think will be very helpful. I do agree with my colleagues on the permit streamlining process. Let's, um, you know, nothing can nothing can hamper a business startup than going through months and months of a plan check and redesign and uh, you know, all the other stuff, so if we need to, this budget cycle, if we need to put some money into I'm not saying employees necessarily, but consultants, uh, contractors that can come in and and handle the workload. I wouldn't be opposed to that, and I'm sure we can discuss that when the time comes. But in all fairness, in all fairness, I get those calls too from businesses, and sometimes homeowners going through the permit process, and invariably you know, they're the ones who've screwed something up, they, you know, haven't put in the proper plan, or they've they're doing it ex post facto, you know, trying to get something permitted that was already done improperly, so. To the extent we can re- resolve some of that backlog with additional staff, albeit temporary, I'm very much in favor of that. Yeah, I think we are a smart town, uh, but I don't know how we go around and maybe it's census data, I don't know how we go around doing, you know, a a survey saying, what level of education do you have, and does, uh, does four years at at the Yerovan Institute equal a master's degree, or uh, does two years at, uh, GCC with a certificate constitute a a university degree? I know, we're, I mean, we're a pretty smart, I know we're a pretty smart city. Most everyone I speak to is very well-read. I don't think there's any literacy problem if you wanna start at the very bottom, and as you move up, I think we've got a quite a good ratio of professionals with that advanced degree in the city. But I don't know how we go around changing that, maybe lodge a protest or have a citywide Jeopardy game, I don't, I don't know what to do, but, but we're smart, I know, we're smart, we've got some real smart smart people with various degrees from different countries and different subjects, subjects, et cetera. Um, and that's all, that's all I wanna say, I I applaud the effort, let's keep going, and oh, the housing, now, I don't think there's anything, you know, i- i- in the real world, in the, in the academic world, if you increase the supply of something, then the price will go down if the demand remains the same. But the problem is we are regional, this is a regional issue, so if we increase the supply, we just get people from other areas coming in, and they eat up that supply, not causing the prices, whether it's rents, or whether it's home prices or condo prices, to go down, so that's a real tough one. I understand it's a problem, I acknowledge that they're listing that as an issue, that the homes are too expensive. Yeah, I don't know, you can I just don't know, maybe we should create a blue ribbon panel on housing.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian, that's enough.
Cut right there, okay. But I think it's, it's a, it's a difficult issue that I don't expect staff to necessarily have a answer for. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Uh, Councilmember Agajanian, you're on.
Madam Mayor, I'd be very brief. What I continuously getting complaints is permit section in our community development section. Uh, Mr. Bill Lanza F M I spoke to him before also. Permit section, we have serious problems with those who wanna start a business, or to get permit to or start a business, or inside, changing something, or building permits, and those permit section, I have a problem with that. Uh, they say they have lost eight employees in that department. So I don't know what we can do to expedite things. People are waiting months and they don't hear anything. Uh, they don't know what they have to do. Sometimes, of course, those who apply, they do wrong things. I have to admit, they go, they're not following the procedure. I understand that. The small business has been said here, SBA loans. Most of them, they were unable in Glendale to get because they don't have the education, they, they own small business, they came from other places, other countries, they don't know how to do it. So we have to have, create a situation that if government is giving money or helping financially, so our business owners to know where to go to get some help or ideas and how to proceed. That's what I want to see in that, uh, that department to take care of. We have this plan of big business come to, the bus- businesses, they come to Glendale and our, uh, different departments, um, and development, uh, our economic development or those sections, they have concierge, they help them. But, uh, I, I never heard that the small business can come and, uh, get some sort of help as the big ones they are getting. So these big businesses, they have money, they have enough money, they can hire enough consultants and others. This is small ones are who are seeking our help. So, uh, we have to pay more attention to smaller businesses and, uh, help those smaller businesses who are struggling to get loans from different departments, whether it's SB or others to get, uh, I mean, directly we help them. Maybe there is a section says, okay, you want to try to get a small business loan? We have a class, let's say, once a week or once a month, I don't know. So they can come and learn something. Uh, for a small business to go and get consultants are almost impossible, especially when they want to start a business, whatever they have and they borrow from relatives, mother and father or son and brother and sister, and they put in the business. And then there is not much left to survive for few months. Uh, in the beginning, when they open the business, they do not have the money to, uh, follow. So they need some guidance from us. So that's what I want to see and the balance of what my friends said or colleagues, they have said here, I agree with most of them. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Thank you, uh, to my colleagues for all of their comments. Um, I have a list, uh, that, uh, is mostly the same as, as what has been said, uh, but I first want to, you know, say that the task force seems to be a good dichotomy somehow of our business community and the fact that they've, they've listed, uh, a lot of, uh, important, uh, goals and, um, uh, for, for the city to try to, uh, to attain, uh, of course, working with all of them. And I want to thank staff for, for this report and, uh, for comparing demographics, not just here in Glendale, but in uh, outside of California as well. And I thought that was very interesting, uh, interesting reading, believe it or not. My first comment was, uh, you know, many years ago, well, maybe not so many years ago, Glendale was given the award of the most business friendly city in, uh, Southern California. And, um, that was our reputation. But then COVID hit and, you know, we are all getting emails from business owners and, uh, residents that want to open a business and, you know, um, it's difficult to come down really hard on staff because uh, of the lack of staff that we have. And, um, uh, you know, when you lose that many staff members, of course, you're going to have a, a backlog and that's where we are now. So, uh, I think staff knows, I think Mr. Calvert knows that something has to be done. Uh, I will say that, um, we are looking for changes in the protocol. There will be a study of the department, as I understand it, uh, to change maybe some of the processes and, uh, and make it easier for our businesses to, to get their work done and our developers and our, you know, landlords that want to do, uh, work on their, um, apartment buildings, um, to uh, speed up the permit process. Um, I do think, uh, so let's, let's look, I look forward to that, Mr. Calvert and, and staff. Uh, that once, uh, we get this, this report and we understand exactly how we can tweak the system, how we can tweak the process. And perhaps as, uh, Councilmember Najarian said, we can use more consultants to, to bring in plan checkers, et cetera, we can speed up the process. But, you know, we're still in this COVID situation and so that becomes a difficult, uh, goal. But I'm all for it. I want us to be the business be- be- best business friendly city in Southern California again, just like all of us do. Rebranding, I have to say the rebranding worked for the airport, uh, the Hollywood Burbank Airport. And, uh, I think it's a good way of, of letting people know, like Councilmember Brotman, I didn't know that, uh, we were the first to have an apple. Well, we were the first for a lot of things and, you know, rebrand, branding doesn't, doesn't hurt usually. So uh, I, I'm not totally against it and I think when it's necessary, we should definitely, uh, brand or rebrand. I think we need to recruit a diversity in restaurants and entertainment and that's been talked about by everybody today, of better restaurants, high-end restaurants, all sorts of entertainment. We now have, do have one, uh, establishment that has jazz and actually they were mentioned in the LA Times as well for places to go. It's a gaming, uh, business on brand, I believe it is. And they were mentioned in the LA Times as well as a place to go while you're here for the Super Bowl. So those kinds of, um, uh, places will definitely attract people. And so I, I agree with, with Mr. Brotman about, Councilmember Brotman about that. The restaurant was supposed to be butterscotch, uh, Councilmember Najarian, if I remember correctly, and we were giving them a grant for a refrigerator system, I believe. Um, so I would like to make sure that, or ask or suggest that we continue that grant process where if a restaurant needs help in, uh, renovation or in getting started, that we, we are there to help them. Um, that, uh, we, we absolutely support all of our small businesses. We also have a program that I participated in and I know Councilmember Agajanian participated in where, um, economic development visited all the businesses here in Glendale to let them know that our department, our city was there, is there for them. And the response to that was unbelievable, to know that we cared enough, the city cared enough to visit their establishments, their businesses and let them know what we offer, um, what kind of help we can give them, what kind of transportation we provide, et cetera. And I would like to see that program continue as well. Uh, more collaboration, you know, I am a great advocate of collaboration. I think we get the best results when we collaborate. So we can collaborate more with the, um, the chamber, with the down, Greater Downtown Business Association, with our schools, with collaborate with all of these, um, institutions in our city. To get their ideas, to get them involved in the, in the process that we're, we're trying to, uh, improve on our, uh, our economic development. You know, and I may be, I may get, I may get called on the carpet for this one, but we do need a high-end hotel. If you look at the TOT statistics in this report, Burbank and Pasadena are so far ahead of us, but they have so many more rooms. And, um, our, our residents have been calling for a high-end hotel. And I think if we, if we, uh, decide to go with a hotel in the future, it has to be a high-end hotel. What else? Oh, I, I also wanted to suggest that, uh, you know, I like that spend a day in Glendale. Well, how about spend, um, how about spend an evening in Glendale? When someone buys a ticket after COVID and Antaeus, Antaeus is open again and, and, um, even now with the Alex Theater being open, but with these provide, um, vouchers for restaurants, like if, if we provided a voucher or Raffi's consented to provide a voucher for 10% off dinners uh, with every ticket sold at the Antaeus or any of the other restaurants in our city, um, like, uh, Councilmember Najarian said, we have some really good restaurants and if we can get people to visit those restaurants uh, when they're here, uh, for an evening, uh, that would be even better. I know that we do well, but we could do better, we can do better. So I, I like that idea. I think Tech Week, I think that was a huge hit. We, we have to continue to support our tech and our incubators and look into that clean tech industry. And, um, I am happy to hear that there was optimism uh, with this task force and into how we're, you know, what we're heading for in the future. Uh, that to me is, is, um, finishing on a high note. And so, Mr. Calvert, Ms. Wang, I hope that you got enough, uh, uh, direction from this council to carry on and take us to the next steps.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I had a question, um, something that maybe, uh, staff could, could, uh, kind of bring back to us later and that is, one, one of the, um, one of the things I think about a lot when, when we talk about, you know, job creation and we want to be a dynamic economy that's creating jobs is the problem of, of commuting, the problem because of our housing costs that people live far away and, and have to come here and, you know, you know, and really should be a, a, maybe a metric for us, a goal for us to, um, to increase the numbers of people that work here and that either live here or live within a, a reasonable radius. But, um, on that, I was wondering if we have data on, um, you know, jobs in Glendale and, and, and where people come in from and how they come. Do they, do they take public transit? It's probably going to be a small number. Um, but, um, how do they get here? And, um, and also people that live here that don't work here, where do they work? How far do they go? But, but more importantly, like the, the jobs here, where are these people coming from? What can we do? How do we, how do we create more opportunities for people to live here? Uh, and, and address that problem. That is a problem I think employers have, I've heard it, which is, you know, you want to hire good people, they can't afford to live here. They're going to be commuting an hour to get here. It's, 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 you know, it wears on them personally, on their family life. They're not part of the community because they're, they're, they're spending so much time on the road. That would be something I'd like to focus on.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think that, uh, wraps up, uh, our direction. Is that, uh, satisfactory to you, Mr. Calvert?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
There is a motion to note and file.
Yes, I'm sorry.
There is a motion to note and file, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'll move to note and file.
I'll second.
Hey, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, and what's next, please?
Next would be adjournment.
I have a motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. uh, Councilmember Kasakian. We are adjourned at 4:22. Thank you. And we will go on to the Glendale City Council meeting for February the 8th, 2022, being called to order at 4:22. Uh, and again, because of, to slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, city council as well as board and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public. You may view, um, all of them on, um, Glendale TV, Spectrum Channel 6 or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, Roku TV, Amazon devices, a free app called Screenweave or on our Glendale, uh, webpage, glendaleca.gov uh, forward slash live. And, uh, what, uh, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here. Next, please.
One would be closed session, one-day conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Bada Sar versus the City of Glendale, LASC case number 20STCV01045. And I'll be moving on to item C, which is one C conference with real property negotiators, property location, real property generally located at the, uh, terminus of New York Avenue near Park Vista Drive, commonly referred to as Mountain Oaks. Negotiating, negotiating parties, uh, F and E and M Incorporated, employees, defined contribution plan trust dated July 10th, 1984. Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Kalininga, J. Garcia, June Van Miden, Philip Landzepfim, Sylvia Alonso, Jason Bradford and Onik Bulanikan. Instructions to the negotiator will concern the price in terms of the accu- uh, acquisition of property. D, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, F, E and M Incorporated, employees defined contribution plan, trusted, uh, trust dated July 10th, 1984, versus the Steve Glendale at, at all, LASC case number BS16989.
Mr. Garcia, do you expect to report out on any of these items?
We do not anticipate reporting out, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will recess to closed session. Thank you.